Actually, I had some items on the agenda.
Absolutely. I see everyone jumped. I was like, we got it here. Are you, do you have two that you'd like to add?
Yeah, if we can't add two closed session items, sixteen F, advice from officials, and G, land.
I don't want to make the motion for the amended agenda.
Motion to approve the motion.
By councillor Carlson?
Oh.
No, no, car, cancelled pedals. Thank you. Sorry. Just seeing hands go down. Any questions, cows, in regards to that? All in favor? So we'll add those to the encambers.
So that was, we needed unanimous consent, first of all, and then we needed a motion to approve the agenda now.
Okay, and then looking for a motion to approve the agenda now. Move by councillor Cutler. All those in favor? Good. Alright. Alright, moving on, looking for an adoption from the regular meeting minutes from January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from January twenty-third as presented.
Thank you. All those in favor, passed. Moving on to delegations, Claris Home RCMP detachment, Corporal Tom Marin, quarter, Q three report for Claris Home. Welcome. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks, Rob. Alright, so I'll just get right into it. The attached to my package here that I sent out a few weeks ago. Start of it is the letter at beginnings pertaining to the Alberta government upgrading our current nine-one-one operations. So, not gonna pretend like I'm an expert on this, because I pretty much know as much as you, but it looks like it'll be, it's more technologically advanced. They can pull information from vehicles and collisions, giving us better coordinates to find collisions. You can, I guess, call nine-one-one over text now. And there's a potential to communicate to nine-one-one operators over video conference. Other than that, that's that first letter. And then there's a little diagram, just kinda quick blurbs about the benefits of this new nine-one-one upgrade. Next is the second letter in the package here. So we're coming to the end of our fiscal year here for the RCMP. At which time, we're looking at if council either wants to keep our current community priorities, or if we wanna look at changing those priorities for fiscal year of two thousand twenty-three. Right now, we have traffic safety, which involves speeding enforcement and impaired driving enforcement, crime reduction, which entails offender checks, educational media releases, and our Operation Street Sweeps we do once a quarter. Next is community relations. This is us doing foot patrols within the town, enhanced visibility shifts to help with curfew checks, condition checks, and traffic enforcement. And then meetings and presentations within the community. And then next is reduction of substance abuse, which is drug enforcement, and then getting members trained with drug enforcement training to be more efficient with those investigations. So priorities we could look at, I personally think these four priorities are really fitting to the community, but if so you wish to change them, we can look at, again, traffic safety, but look more maybe at seat belts or kinda things like that, or a combination of speeding seat belts and just general traffic enforcement. Fraud prevention, more presence in schools, our interdepartmental efforts with either bylaw or fish and wildlife. And then water safety, which doesn't really pertain to our area mu- much, but... So if council could decide by the end of March and have a response to me, hopefully by letter, if you wanna keep our current priorities, or if you wanna change, keep some or change, or change all of them, it's up to you guys. Next is just all the meetings that myself and my colleagues have done in the community last quarter. And we'll just go to community priorities. Most priorities are on track to be fulfilled by the end of this fiscal year. The only one that's down is speeding enforcement, and that was, there wasn't a lot of members trained on radar or laser enforcement in town, only a handful of us. So it was hard to get those numbers, but I'm happy to say that I got a laser radar course ran at the end of January at the fire hall. So all members in Nanton and Claris Home are now trained on radar laser. So hopefully by the end of this fiscal year, we should see those numbers climb to our year-end goal. And impaireds are down, but I find with the new provincial laws, it's been a big deterrent of impaired driving. And it's been harder for us to get impaired since they've changed that legislation from criminal to provincial. Just kinda more ramifications with the provincial side of things, so more of a deterrent. And then just at the end, just drug enforcement, so with results for drug enforcement. I don't know if I didn't have enough coffee when I wrote this, but there was two drug-related charges last quarter within the community. And recently, there has, we did a seizure of about forty ounces of crack cocaine at a residence here a couple of weeks ago. And before that, another occurrence where we seized a couple ounces of fentanyl. And then a couple members partook in training with source development, so just how to better get sources out in the community so they can get information so we can do search warrants and whatnot. And there's a couple active drug enforcement investigations currently going on with houses and whatnot in town, so still looking at those, collecting evidence to, in order to gain entry, right? Any questions about those? Okay, next is crime statistics. This quarter, they looked pretty favorable. We had one more person's crime over this quarter of two thousand twenty-one. That entails assaults, sex assaults, that kind of nature. So that's still good. Property crime was down seven percent. And that entails break-in enters, vehicle thefts, people going into vehicles, stealing electronics out of them, valuables. Criminal code traffic was down forty-five percent, which is a good number. That's impaired driving, causing bodily harm or death, things of that nature. And then that's really, really about it. Motor vehicle collisions in general were down seventeen percent as well, which is nice to see. It was sixty-three this quarter of two thousand twenty-one, whereas this last quarter is fifty-two, so that's a nice change. Any questions about those stats?
These stats, are these Claris Home, Nanton together, or is this strictly Claris Home?
Strictly Claris Home, yeah.
Nine hundred and twenty criminal code tra- or provincial code traffic, just in Claris Home over here?
So that's, uh, that's us writing tickets. That's, yeah, any ticket kinda generates the provincial code traffic. Yep. Alright, so I'll get into staffing here. So, you know, the last couple times I've been here, it's been kinda dismal, but there's a light at the end of the tunnel here. Next month, we have a constable who lateraled from Caninasca's detachment. He's starting March fourth in town here. So he's gonna fill that fifth constable spot that was vacant. And then we have a potential sergeant coming to Claris Home here. It's a promotion, so there's still a few more steps he has to achieve, but hopefully he'll be here late spring. We'll see. And then we're still huddled with Nanton, which is the detachment I'm in charge of. We're still huddled and sharing resources with each other, manpower and schedule and whatnot. But with that being said, Corporal Orston is retiring now, so we will be losing him shortly, unfortunately, so, but... And really, that's it for the package. Unless there's any questions, I'll get into some, kinda some highlights of this last quarter. Alright, so like I said, I had that radar laser course that I had run at the end of January, so all members are trained on radar laser, so that's good. Over the holidays, I, we joined up with SAD, Students Against Drunk Driving, sorry, and implemented this liquor bag campaign within town. So SAD would give us about a hundred paper bags. We took them to local elementary schools between here and Staveley. Had the youth draw anti-drinking-driving slogans on the paper bags, and then we handed them out to participating liquor stores in town here. And as far as I know, it was well-received within the community. And then a couple of weeks ago, we did Operation Cold Start about two weeks ago. So this is a kinda provincial project where the province will pick a cold week that's forecasted being probably below negative fifteen. The idea is the police will go out, will look for vehicles that are running early in the morning, people heating their vehicles, getting ready to go to work or whatever, and looking for vehicles that are A, unlocked, and B, have keys in the ignition, if they aren't auto-start. So we found ten vehicles within town that were unlocked with keys in the ignition. So we handed out pamphlets to the owners of the vehicles, just kinda advising them how that act can open them up for victimization, right, criminal activity? Because it's, could have a vehicle running, could be two seconds parked outside, and it could be gone, right, so... And that's really about it.
I have one question for you.
Yes.
I just wanted to know, because I know previously you had done the Cadillac, Catalytic?
Catalytic, yeah.
Thank you. It's, that's a hard one for me, a project within town, and I was just curious to see how that went. Is that still a problem, or is that a project that's currently happening?
Yeah, so sorry, that's one project I forgot here. So I did implement that last quarter. It was five shops that volunteered to partake in it. So it was, the goal of the project is to, while the vehicle, well, I guess the shop's doing an oil change on the vehicle, or some simple fix like that, and they have the vehicle up on a hoist, they'll engrave the last eight numbers of the vehicle's VIN number into the catalytic converter of the vehicle, because it's a hot commodity for theft. It's, they range anywhere from twelve to two thousand dollars street value, right? And it's a five-second crime to cut them off with a battery-operated sawzall. So I implemented it, and then a month after, I followed up with the shops, and one shop, it was their busy season for changing winter tires over, so they couldn't get around to implementing it. There was a couple other shops that just didn't see any importance behind it and thought it was a waste of time. Pretty much it's Dodge and One Shot Auto that are still running the program, and they've had good luck with it so far. And thank you to the town for helping me out with that project as well, with the engravers.
Thank you.
Alright.
Any other questions? Is that all you had for us?
That's all I had, short and sweet, yeah.
Thank you for coming in tonight. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
We will talk soon. Alright. Moving on to our action items. Correspondence, Joe Cece, MLA for Calgary Buffalo and Critic for Municipal Affairs. RE, Alberta Budget Two Thousand Twenty-three. Abe?
Yeah, just some correspondence from the Critic for Municipal Affairs in the province. Joe Cece, the budget is, provincial budget is set to be released soon, and it's just reaching out to Albertans to seek their input and priorities, municipal priorities. So he's reached out. You can contact him at his email address or his phone number.
Any discussion in regards to that? Take that for information. Moving on to number two, correspondence, Mayor Sheila Gilmore, Town of Fox Creek, ambulance service. Abe?
More municipal correspondence regarding the ambulance service in the province. This one from the Town of Fox Creek in response to some correspondence they received from the Town of Pinoka, just expressing concerns about wait times and potential wait times for ambulances and ambulances leaving the communities. Council, the councils in the MD, including this council, recently approved firefighters, the medical first response program to actually transport critical medical patients. Other than that, there hasn't been a lot of direction from council on this medical first response program.
Open it up for discussion. Any comments or thoughts to this? It's a concern for everyone, but we'll take it for information. Move on. Correspondence, Land Property Rights Tribunal, Notice of Intent to Annex Acknowledgement. Abe?
Yeah, so we have sent out a notice of intent to annex lands on the west of town. Council approved that decision or motion recently, within the last couple of months. So the process is that we sent a letter of intent, notice of intent, and they're just acknowledging the, the Land and Property Rights Tribunal is just acknowledging, it's a kind of a generic correspondence item, directing our attention to the application package, and there's several items that have to be taken care of. So ORSC and, and our development office, as well as the MDs, are working through that application process. That will include public engagement, and again, a number of other items that have to be considered.
Any questions or concerns in regards to that? We'll take it for information. Moving on, number four, correspondence, Farm Safety Centre, Safety Smarts Program. Abe?
Yeah, so the Farm Safety Centre does a number of safety initiatives for individuals throughout rural Alberta. They have a program where they go into schools and teach safety to children throughout the province. Safety Smarts Program is what it's called. They also have a general rural health initiative that promotes well-being for adults and safety and whatnot. So we have contributed to this initiative several times in the past, and did last year as well. It was three hundred last year. It looks like they're asking for anywhere from three fifty to five hundred this year.
Open it up for, for discussion. Any comments in regards to this? We'll call a bunch tonight. Yeah, just call a bunch tonight. Councillor Cutler?
Our budget for donations has been depleted and exceeded, I believe. Is that correct?
Well, we're into a new year now, so this would be one of the first requests that we've, in the, in the past, though, it has, last year.
So our fiscal year is January to January?
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was April to April. So we have a new budget for donations now?
Yes.
Started again. Thank you for that clarification. I would like to make a motion to donate three hundred and fifty dollars to this safety first program.
Alright. Move by councillor Cutler. Question?
Move by councillor Cutler to support the Farm Safety Centre's delivery of the Safety Smarts Program to children in Claris Home Schools in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars for two thousand twenty-three.
Any further questions, comments, concerns in this? All those in favor? And opposed? Three opposed, motion passed. Moving on, correspondence, Staveley Elks and Royal Purple, RE, two thousand twenty-three Canadian Curling Championship. Abe?
Yeah, I have a request here from the Staveley Elks and Royal Purple. They are hosting curling championships as the host lodge. They'll be having it in Staveley and in Claris Home as well. And so they have requested some funding for that event in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars, which would go towards ice rental.
Open it up for discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to donate the four hundred and fifty dollars towards the ice rental for the curling championships.
Move by councillor Zimmer. Question?
Move by councillor Zimmer to support the Staveley Elks and Royal Purple's two thousand twenty-three Canadian Curling Championship event with a donation of the amount of, in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars to help cover the cost of ice rental.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? Councillor Kettles?
Does anybody know, would this be dollars that then we are presenting to the curling club to cover the ice rental? Because we don't directly charge ice rental at the curling club. Am I right on that?
Would we just go to the group and then that would?
It would just, so we'd be, it'd be, it'd be par dollars, we're donating to the group so they could fund that. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? All those in favor? Passed, and if no, no opposed. Moving on, correspondence, Municipal District of Willow Creek, number twenty-six, Notice of Public Hearing, Proposed Bylaw One nine four three. Abe?
Yeah, so the MD has sent out notice of a public hearing, a proposed bylaw amendment. The main purpose is to add provisions to the bylaw regarding defining distinct categories of wind and solar development, both for personal use, but also for kind of industrial, commercial uses as well. And so, looking to provide clear standards of development and conditions that may be placed on approved developments. So just looking to guide those kinds of projects in the MD. And so the town was circulated on this because we do have land out near the airport, which is potentially some of the areas that will be, that may be affected. Also, I think just as a neighborly thing, they sent out to probably all the municipalities in the MD as well. This was discussed at the MPC meeting on Friday. I'm not sure if there was any additional or thorough discussion on the matter. I know that our ORSC planner and our development officer don't have any concerns with this.
Open it up for discussion.
The MD's just doing? The MD's doing this so they get, they get a seat at the table. Because right now, Alberta Utilities Commission says yea or nay, right? They, they decide. So the MD, they were told, you need a bylaw. Gets you a seat at the table to express their opinion.
This is obviously an open public hearing for people to go and express their concerns, correct, to take place on?
February twenty-second.
Twenty-second at one PM?
Yeah, at the council chambers at the MD.
Any other comments in regards to this? We'll take it for information. Moving on, correspondence, Town of Claris Home Economic Development, Letter of Support for MD of Willow Creek Application. Abe?
So we provided a letter of support to the MD's application to the NRED program, which is Northern and Regional Economic Development Program. They also provided a letter of support to our application as well. Just pulling that up here, bear with me. They are applying to receive funding for promotional videos, trying to, trying to attract investment and interest in emerging markets. And so we just, again, we just, being a good neighbor, and not necessarily a collaborative effort, but a spirit of collaboration, provided a letter of support to their application.
Any comments in regards to that? Take it for information. Moving on, number eight, Request for Decision, The Range Gravel Road Experience. Abe?
So if you recall, last year, we had a bike race that we were able to work with the MD and a group of race organizers to have a gravel race in the town and primarily out in the MD. There was a few requests that this group had for us that we helped out with last year. They're basically asking for the same thing again. But the, the race went very well, got a lot of positive attention for the region. And I'm told that they did, I believe, two hundred and fifty riders last year. They're doing three hundred this year. They sold out their spots within five hours of registrations opening, so that's a good sign. I'll just go over the list of asks here for the town to use the Centennial Park campground to stage the start and finish lines of the event. Shower use with a fee of five dollars has been requested again, so the riders can use it after they finish the course. Reservation of campsites for the event up until May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, similar request previously. They have requested eight tree campsites, sites four to eleven for their volunteers, and barricades, no parking signs, tables and chairs, and pylons. We assisted them with all those things last year, last year as well. And then a request to hold a beer gardens from two to seven in Centennial Park. So this event is scheduled to go on July twenty-second, and again, in the Centennial Park area.
Open it up for discussion.
I'll make the first motion.
Move by councillor Cutler. Question?
Move by councillor Cutler to hold the start and finish line and staging area for the Range Gravel Experience event July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, at Centennial Park campground, to reserve eight tree sites for volunteers, and to reserve campsites for the event up until May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and to set a five-dollar shower fee for riders at Centennial Park campground after finishing the gravel road race.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Passed. Looking for second motion for barricades and parking signage? Move by councillor Carlson. Question?
Move by councillor Carlson to provide barricades and parking signage and tables and chairs as required for the Range Gravel Experience two thousand twenty-three event.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? And looking for a third motion for the beer gardens.
I'll make that motion.
Move by councillor Schlossberger. Question?
Move by councillor Schlossberger to approve the Claris Home Skate Park Association to host a beer gardens in Centennial Park from two to seven PM on July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, provided that they secure all required licensing and approvals.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Passed. Moving on, Request for Decision, Claris Home Weekly Market Request. Abe?
So council has received some correspondence. So council has received some correspondence from some individuals looking to put on a summer market in town. This is not the traditional farmer's market. It's a different group that we, that we've had in town. And so they have actually requested to use Admanson Park at the same time and dates that the farmer's market normally uses it at. So we haven't heard yet from the Clarestom Farmer's Market regarding their interest in the season, the farmer's market season, and using Admanson Park. However, we would suggest, because we haven't, that we actually reach out to both groups and try to get them together, get them on the same page, to see if we can create a schedule for summer markets whereby both groups can, can use the park. And we have attached our, our policy on here that provides decision-making over park usage for nonprofit groups. Basically, administration has the ability to make that. So we're recommending that council allow us to reach out to these groups and see if we can coordinate, again, a summer schedule where both, both groups can use the park. If there are any wishes for the park, if council's okay with this, if there are any wishes or requests, just let us know and we'll try to take those things into consideration.
Open it up for discussion. Counselor Kettles?
Please make all these people happy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything. And you're looking for a decision? Or you're just looking for?
Yeah, just looking for a motion just to direct us to, to work with these groups to make them happy, as Counselor Kettles has said.
Okay, so move by Counselor Kettles. Question?
Move by Counselor Kettles to direct administration to work with both market groups to establish a summer market schedule at Admanson Park.
All right. Any further questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Moving on. Request for Decision. Letter of Support. Skate Park Association. Abe?
Yeah, we have a request here from the Skate Park Association. As, as you know, council, there is a project in the works. They've been fundraising for several years. And as part of their ongoing fundraising for the skate park, they are planning to submit to a co-op Community Spaces grant, which awards $1 million to projects across the western Canada each year and, and supplies up to $150, sorry, $150,000 per project. So at this point in time, they're just asking for a letter of support. They will submit the application themselves. There is a note in here that they may ask for a little bit of in-kind labor as a part of the, the, the work if they're successful. And that way, they would be able to allocate more of the funds to the actual project costs. But that request is not, it's not before yet this time. It's just to write a letter of support right now.
Open it up for discussion.
I think they need all the support they can get. Let's do it.
Would like to make that motion.
Sure, I will.
Thank you. Move by Counselor Meister. Question?
Move by Counselor Meister to write a letter of support towards the Clarestom Skate Park Association's application to the Co-op Community Spaces Grant for the purpose of constructing the skate park at 11155 Avenue West, the site of the new multi-use facility in which the town has allocated land for the skate park construction.
Any further thoughts, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Passed. Moving on. Request for Decision. 2023 Spring Municipal Leaders Caucus. Abe?
So there is, Alberta municipalities hold yearly events and where they invite municipalities and elected officials to come and discuss relevant issues and advocate for municipalities. Last year, at the, the Spring Municipal Leaders Event, Counselor, Counselor Carlson and the mayor attended. We do have budget money set aside for council to attend these events, members of council to attend these events. The costs down here for registration are, are available for your calculating brains. And there is also a municipal leaders, sorry, a president's summit, which I think is new this year, that will go at the beginning of the municipal leaders event. And with a focus, that one's going to have a focus on inter-municipal collaboration. At the time of, when I last looked at the website, there wasn't an agenda available, so I don't know what the other items are. But yeah, that event happens March 30th and 31st with the Municipal Leaders Summit, 29th and 30th.
Open it up for discussion. I am working those days, so I'm not able to get that off if someone else is looking to attend and represent, represent us.
I think that the President Summit would be a good thing to attend as well, just on top, because there was that priority talk about the inter-municipal collaboration process, I think, which is vital for the MD and the town. And I would be willing to attend that four days, 29th, 30th, and three days.
I think we sent two last year. I think we're looking to for two as well. Anyone else that thinks it'd be beneficial to attend?
I found it beneficial. I can't commit to the dates right now, though, but if I can check back with you.
You need motions for who we'd like to send?
Those are the only two. We can have a motion to prove both of you in the hopes that Counselor Carlson can attend.
Someone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Move by Counselor Kettles. Question?
Move by Counselor Kettles to approve Counselors Carlson and Cutler to attend the 2023 Alberta Municipalities Spring Leaders Caucus and the President Summit on the Future of Municipal Government on March 30th and 31st, 2023.
All right. Any further questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? All right. Moving on. Request for Decision. Stormwater Management Phase Two. Abe?
Sorry, just real quick. I didn't, I'm not sure if I mentioned that there is virtual attendance to that conference as well, if anybody wants to, can't make it up, wants to go, it's reasonably priced. We just reach out and we can hook you up with the registration.
All right. Anyone now would like to attend virtually before we move on? All right, let's move on. And for Request for Decision for the Stormwater Management Phase Two.
Okay, so we're looking at proceeding with Stormwater Management, Phase Two of, of that project. Previously, council approved the engineering on Phase Two, which, if you recall, starts off at the Centennial Park and goes north of the fire hall and then on the west side of the fire hall and then crosses the highway 520. And then, as you can see on the drawing here, the yellow portions is where, after it crosses 520, that's where the stormwater line goes. And then where, then it ties in down to the Frog Creek Drainage and through the golf course. That was meant to be one, one phase, one whole phase of the project. However, we decided to try to, to break it up. And because the parade staging grounds have been purchased and they needed to be serviced with stormwater capacity, we decided to just tie into and propose tying into the parade staging and do this in a phased approach. And so we budgeted $300,000 for that, which was probably too optimistic. And a little short. We were hoping, we didn't have the, the project broken up into two pieces. Also, we were hoping that we would get a little bit more contribution from the developer. But after the engineers talked it out, there was just a small portion that the, the developer would actually be paying for of this project. So after connecting with associated engineering, they have given us estimated costs for this project of $750,000. So we are hoping to get council's approval today for this project. Again, the, the drawings have already been, been done. Associated provided those for us. Those were completed under, those were grant funded under the, the first grant that we had. Previously, the $300,000 was earmarked to come out of utility reserves. However, we have some different scenarios here whereby, excuse me, whereby the money would come out from a combination of land and development capital reserves, MSI, or possibly the federal gas tax fund as well. The nature of the funding doesn't need to be decided today necessarily. We can talk about that at a, a future FIPSE Facility Infrastructure Planning Committee meeting. But this project does accomplish two of council's strategic priorities. The first of which is to continue on with the stormwater management plan, and the second of which is to encourage development. The developer, property owner, wants to proceed with construction in 2023 and cannot proceed if we don't install these lines.
Counselor Cutler, did you have a question?
No, I had a financial statement, but we don't have to discuss the financial statements tonight. Right? Is that what you said?
Yeah, the, the actual makeup, yeah.
We don't have to do that tonight.
We don't have to, but if you have questions.
No, I just, to me, when I looked over this, I was looking at the, the options. And in my brain, the Water and Sewer Capital Reserve is intended for this fund, where if we start taking from the MSI and the CBF, we're taking away from other projects that we can't pull. So to me, it just makes sense to take the whole funding from the Water Sewer Capital. If we have something that comes up later in the Water Sewer, we don't have enough money, we can take from the MSI and the CBF there. Right?
Yeah.
So just, that's all, that was my only question was, that's what the reserve is intended for? That's what the reserve should be used for? That, that was my only statement. I just didn't see the need for the other options.
I agree. We have signed commitments from this developer to start developing in 2023?
I don't know if we have signed commitments. We have active conversations with this landowner, developer, regular contact, so their intention is to proceed this year.
And do you mind what I add? Is that $750,000 that we would spend, is that just our portion? Or will they be paying for a part of that portion as well?
They, they would pay for a very small part of that project.
1%? 10%?
It, it's only a few percent. Yeah. We were hoping to, to work with them. By we could get a little more, but that's, after the engineers got, got involved and looked into it, they decided, they determined that their portion for that was, was quite minimal. The Land and Development Capital Reserve would, would be another one that would be a logical fit, in my opinion. However, that's council's call, so.
Well, no, the only reason why I made that statement was we have this reserve for a reason, for the water improvement and maintenance. If we start pulling from MSI and leaving MSI short, we can't pull from the water reserves to fix MSI projects, right? And those types of things. So I'd like to see it just strictly stay. If it's a water project or a water line project, it just stays out of the water reserve. But I'll make the motion. Don't swear.
I'm sorry, I just had one more. Two more questions. When, if, once this is approved, when does, did it say when it expects to be start, started and finished? Or does that depending on the developers there as well?
No, yeah, that can be tendered right away. Those, those, it's all engineered, so we can throw that in. I'm not sure their time, their timeframe. I haven't talked to them, but that's ready to go right away. And I guess the other bonus that I didn't mention here is once we get this done, get this work done, we bought a piece of property last year. Once that gets installed, we can, we can then sell that piece of land and put that money back into the, the reserves as well. So this piece of land here, where the stormwater will, will run through, stormwater line, sorry.
I can make that motion to approve Phase Two.
Move by Counselor Cutler. Question?
Move by Counselor Cutler to approve Phase Two Stormwater Project as presented to be completed within the 2023 construction season and funding to be deferred to the Facility and Infrastructure Planning Committee for 2023 budget discussions.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. Motion carried me. Moving on. 13 Information Brief Council Committee Reports. Would anyone like to elaborate on anything? Take it for information. Moving on. Information Brief Council Resolution Status.
Any questions on previous direction from council?
Everything all look good?
Lots of completes out there.
Questions, comments, concerns? Take it for information. Looking for an adoption of the information items as presented. I'll make a motion to adopt the information items as presented. Move by Counselor Meister. Question?
Move by Counselor Meister to adopt the information items as presented.
All those in favor? Passed. I'm looking for a motion to go in camera for personnel, FOIP Section 17. FOIP Section, or Personnel, FOIP Section 17. C, Land, FOIP Section 16. D, Advice from Officials, FOIP Section 24. E, Advice from Officials, FOIP Section 24. 16, oh no.
Yeah.
16F, Advice from Officials, FOIP Section 24. And G, Land, FOIP Section 16. Looking for that motion for 7:47 PM.
I'll make that motion to go in camera.
Thank you. All in favor? Moving to in camera at 7:48 PM. Thank you.